I'd like to call this meeting of the zoning ordinance appeal or zoning ordinance order. We require your approval.
All present, except for Mayor Corcoran, who has an excused absence.
We're going to open the public hearing. The public hearing is to hear comment on the variance in garage to be affected and erected at 527 Bundy Street, I remember Michigan, that exceeds the maximum square footage for accessory structures and erecting an accessory structure without a principal structure on the site.
All right, we're thinking. The question this evening is a variance request for 527 Bundy Street regarding the garage. There's actually two different sections of the zoning code that are affected here. So there are two different sections of the legal that are affected here. The first is section thirty-four, Act 531, regarding building and accessory structure without a principal structure on site. In this situation, from my understanding, the site had a garage on it just by itself without a principal residence on it. It's been damaged, believed by fire damage, and the property would like to remove it and erect a new one. So the first section of the code that needs to be discussed is a variance to allow a new garage to be built, the old one removed and a new garage to be built without a principal structure on site, such as a residential hall. The second issue to discuss, which is thirty-four, Act 538, zoning law, one, is that the size of the structure that the garage that applicant would like to build is a little over two hundred square feet larger than what's permitted. So those are the two items I have questions tonight that actually would need action on, both likely need action on, actually one part together because they are sequential depending on if you approve, just approve one, then the other one can really be brought up basically. Section thirty-four, Act 2856C in the zoning rights describes conditions that need to be met in order for a variance to be granted. The very nature of the variance, they are difficult to grant. So there are some standards there for your review to see if they are met in order to grant these variances. There is a map included in the packet that describes, kind of gives an aerial overview of where the property is questioned, as well as in relation to the property owner's principal residence. Basically, they're across kitty corner from each other from an alley. So as you can see here, the parcel with the number one is where the garage is requested to be removed and a new garage erected, larger than the ordinance allows. And then number two is where the applicant currently lives or resides. Are you having any questions? And the end of this here this evening, if you have a question, you can ask well as the caller for the whole here.
Mr. Rome, I guess I would like to start with Mr. Micklish. Have you got anything on this behalf or?
I'm Robert Micklish and I do own the whole Montmorel right. And when I purchased that property, it was, there was a principal residence in there that was twenty-five by thirty with a ten-foot porch in the front and in the back. And originally I was told I could build on there, you know, if I took, when I took that down. So I took the original building down and I, since the garage that's on there in the back is right on the property line, that garage was twenty-four by twenty. And what I'm proposing, I would like to build is a twenty-eight by thirty-two, but I want to center it onto that lot. In that alley, there are ten garages, mine included, and I would think none of them really meet the variance. They're all right into the alley. The one that I had, I needed to park a vehicle in front of it and walk to get by. There's not another garage in that alley that can do that. The next street, on the other street over, I walked, there are two garages, and I'm guessing just walking on it, the thirty-two by thirty, I would, the next block over on, it's me on Bundy Street, right across, right directly across from that property. So what I'm proposing, you know, what I'm asking is if I could build one twenty-eight by thirty-two.
Could you, for the rest of this, I'm sorry, Bob, be over the microphone here at the podium here. I just have a question. Do you have any other questions? Commissioners, do you have any questions, sir, Mr. Micklish?
If you erected this, how far is the property boundary from the two sides of the garage?
The property, the width of that property is fifty feet. I was told by a hundred and thirty-one feet. And I would try to center it so, you know, where actually where that original garage is, it's near on the property line. You can see where in the lower right-hand corner, that garage is twenty-eight by twenty-four. And I ordered one is to the left side, that garage is right on the property line, and that's twenty-eight by twenty-four. I want to move, when I build the garage, in the middle of that lot so there'd be room on both sides for snow and moving, et cetera. And the only other thing that's in that property that builds one thing there, that's a garden, that's twenty-five by twenty-five. It's a Thanksgiving garden. So there's nothing on, I have already removed the house, I have already removed that small garage. Who owns the property to the east of it? To the east of me, his name is Mark, this, this, I believe, went to the left, I believe the bank now owns it, it was Oger's property, it was an Oger. Actually, Richie Crowe was the one that remodeled that house and built that garage.
Now the neighbors are?
There's no complaint on it. And what they sent out, and I haven't had, I've had neither say they have the problem with the garage's size. Actually, if you look to the right, there is about two hundred yards to the east of that, there's a fifty-by-fifty-five foot garage that's on four lots or five lots there that you can't get even into right now because another person owns the east and coming into that garage, and that is taken over by the bank, right, I believe.
So the garage that you were going to take down, that's already down, or is it?
It's already done, yeah. It was, it's a, the whole site took down, a slumlord had it, and the mice that left that place were unbelievable, you know, I mean, there was no foundation, I didn't do anything, I took that out of the house. So there's absolutely nothing on it. That lot they tell me is a hundred and thirty-one by fifty.
No, I'm looking at ordinance, and it gives a list of conditions that would allow us to grant the variance. Have you read that at all?
Read your whole one.
Because it, it pretty much spells out the conditions that we would use to determine that we ought to grant the variance. But you don't have any specific unique circumstances, unreasonable current zoning, exceptional narrowness, character of the neighborhood. These are all conditions that are spelled out that would have to be considered to grant the variance, and you don't have anything written in that?
I did, I can give a lot, I guess I did originate it, even if I, and then I went through, but.
So I guess one question would be for Michael, if, maybe this is, if we had both of these lots together, would that, would the size of that garage be larger than what the ordinance allows, also if you had these two properties considered together?
Correct. I don't know if the, there are differences in size for detached garages. I don't know if the, if they were put together, what the standards would be for them.
Well, if they were put together, you'd have nine hundred square foot garage, if both of those lots were sighted inside.
Okay, so if it was considered part of the same property, it would be allowed? That was, but it's not actually, but they are close to that. One of the considerations that seemed on there was, I don't know if I read it here, but just the fact that you have a piece of property very close to it, that does not hold on it, so that is one of the things.
The, it's the width of the, the difference from my property, from my residence is, it's kitty corner together, when you're talking, the width of the alley, fifteen feet or twenty feet under that alley, is the separating boxes.
So will you also have any other questions for Mr. Micklish? Moving forward, I'd like to find out if anyone else here would like to make a comment on this issue? Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? No other comments forthcoming? Commissioners, do you have any thoughts on this before we move forward?
Well, I'd like to see some goodies along the property, I guess it's a broken garage there, something there that's useful in it, rather than having a empty lot.
Anybody else have any comments? Moving on, I will close this public hearing. And we're moving on to item six, which is consider action on the Robert Micklish dimensional request.
And just, just a reminder, Commissioner, from Robert Micklish, there'll be two items to consider. I put the motion one, motion two, address motion one first, then two, and I'll order.
I'm just going to break that down. Thank you for that, Mr. Rome. First, we have to decide whether we want to allow structure, garage to be built on a lot of our principal buildings. And this would require a variance from our zoning ordinance. Before we, before we move forward on this, I do have a question for our authority. Good thing I showed up. Yeah, good thing. One of the things that our notes says requires a two-third vote for four out of five members. Now, since we only have four of us here, is it two-thirds of four?
Yes.
No. Two-thirds of five. Move on to what? So that's to be unanimous here. Just making sure that everybody is aware of that before we go. All right. So moving forward, would anybody care to make a motion, number one, to grant ordinance I, the first argument, the variance is spelled out in our notes to allow a garage erected at 527 Bundy Street without a principal residence, principal building?
I'll make the motion to grant that variance.
Second? We have motion to grant the first variance is spelled out, and we also have a second on that. No further discussion. And I'm going to tell you right now that I'm a stickler about variances, and I know we want to be good guys, but we have a zoning law, and we have a person asking for a variance, giving us exactly no reason why we should grant it. That's my position.
Could I just comment to that?
Go ahead, sure.
I guess, given that it's a garage without a principal building, but there is a principal building, there is those, that I, I think that can be a basis.
That's my thinking as well. His building is right across the alley. It's, we're not talking about somebody, it's not living in the neighborhood, he's living right there.
Can we take more than that to convince him? I mean, I too, I personally would love to see use of land also, but it doesn't apply directly to his property. He has given us no extenuating circumstances or reason whatsoever to grant his variance. Is there any concept of a brand property when there's already been a structure there? Is there anything of that nature that's?
There was a section of zoning ordinance that's counted for all zoning ordinances, a non-conformity section of zoning ordinance. So, you know, in this case, if the garage was still present and he had taken down the house, or the house of burden, whatever, there are structures, the house had to be removed, the garage is safe as is. There are other circumstances in zoning ordinance, if there's damage to that garage through fire, when Dale acted God, there's certainly criteria that you can rebuild the existing garage, but to tear out and build brand new and increase the size, increase the non-conformity wouldn't be allowed. So there were, there are circumstances where if the garage still existed and there was some damage to it, we could rebuild, but since the garage is no longer there, the non-conformity portion of that, the ordinance would apply to this.
Well, I'm sorry, guys, but I just, we have a zoning ordinance, and we may think it's not good, and we may think it's supposed to be fixed, but we don't have any other ways for a reason. And sure, many of our zoning ordinance, I just can't see, it's always incomparable in the whole state.
Okay, the rule, but.
Section two seven. Where's your guy? We double check that. Are you checking my, my two-thirds versus? All right, I'd really like to clarify before we move. Mr. Pope, if we can't clarify this, would it make sense to perhaps table this?
If we can't clarify it.
For the city? I was. That's my paperwork.
Oh, you're listening, sorry.
Yeah. Thirty-four, Act 26. Good thing. You just got it online. There's three listings. Size.
No.
According to the forty-two, two, two hundred and five. A lower back. Thank you for your patience. Do we have an answer to our question?
Yes, it's actually a two-part answer, okay? The first part is whether you can use this property for a garage. That's a use variance. By statute and by ordinance, it's a two-thirds vote of your entire membership, meaning all four would have to vote in favor of it at this meeting. Motion two is a non-use variance, no, which is modifying the structural size of a particular use. That only requires a majority vote.
So part, the first part that we currently have on the table requires four votes to pass, for clarification?
Yes. Two-thirds of the entire ZDA, which is all five commissioners, regardless of the statute of the statute.
I personally would like to see our retired commission act on this. We have a motion on the floor, however.
I will, I will rescind my motion, and the motion is tabled as an entire matter until it can be postponed or delayed.
Is that, is that appropriate action?
Yes.
Table, table to the next meeting?
Yes. Make sure if you have any other thoughts on this. Okay, I'll declare this motion tabled until the next meeting, and I'll adjourn this on the board of zoning ordinance. Ready to start our regular meeting? Would you call me at the end? What will be the use of the life of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? I have a D recorded with the roll.
All present, except for Mayor Corcoran, who has an excuse absence.
Item C, approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Shafford, supported by Commissioner Tower, to approve the consent agenda, and further discussion. Will call both.
Peter?
Yes.
Shafford, yes, Tower?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to item D, replace, receive and place on file from the finance director, one, statement of revenue and expenditures, and number two, monthly tax report.
Thank you. Next meeting, I present the annual financials for the month of April. We're ten months into the fiscal year, and unit expenditures should be roughly around eighty-four percent. In the general fund, first page there, we've gone over these past few months, the variance that are over a hundred percent, you see there, nothing significant happened in April, they're all in the past, we discussed them, we've gone through budget amendments process. Now, any expenditures in there were unforeseen, we're back with additional revenue. Period fund balance, as you can see, is healthy, at three hundred and forty-seven thousand plus. Nothing really significant to report in the general fund. Second page of the major local streets, again, we know we have a lot of extra winter maintenance as well as stormy, we have received additional revenue, a statement for those, we've gone through the budget amendment process again with that. In there, also, there are some expenses that were spent wholly to the local streets for signs, you know, and some of the work for major streets, we'll be doing some re-class entries for those. Aside that, major and local streets are all doing okay through April. Third page, with the equipment funds, again, lots of equipment rental, so our revenues are up a lot in the winter that we have. Water and sewer funds, again, we have our West Era Street project going on both of those, seeing the negative fund balances again, just a reminder, the water fund, we did budget for two hundred and twenty-three thousand use of net assets, and the sewer funds, four hundred and fifty thousand budget of net assets in there. So overall, we're, we're doing just fine. Final page, the library, again, showing negative fund balance, as it does all year, get, you know, fines for that in August for the fiscal year. Civic Center, both revenues and expenditures are up, we'll be doing budget amendment process with them as well, we're doing fine. Cemetery will start to pick up now here with the spring burials. Overall, that fund is doing just fine. Again, the volunteer fire department, we've budgeted because they did transfer some funds to the Iron Talonship for the, for the tournament proceeds that were received last fiscal year, to a question I've been at. And then the last three funds, the small funds are doing, are doing just fine. The cash balances report, nothing significant to report, all cash balances are, are healthy and good fine. The lowest sign here, we did close out our phase one and two sewer cash accounts. As you recall, those projects were finished a few months back, we received authorization to close those construction accounts, transfer the funds, under a hundred dollars each, transfer those funds into the water and sewer operating accounts, cash accounts. Check our search report, this is the one's report there. Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
We have to act on item D here before we move on to the next one.
You'll act on, I can read the first two reports and then the third, or excuse me, you'll act on the check register report first or second?
Hold on one more time. Check register report.
No, the statement of revenue and expenditures in the monthly tax report is nothing but a dead film to be in the role. But I will need a role for the monthly check register report.
So, I would receive Paul's report, if there are any questions. So basically, we're off target. Most surprises I anticipated. Would you like to be amending or something at all?
We're going through the process now, doing all the, I think, seeing general entries, the quality most ever required of adjustments. One of the big reasons it's taken so long is because we're going to set up this budget. We're going through negotiations, we're unsure on wage increases, and we're getting the health insurance. That affected a lot of accounts, so it's taking some time to go through. I'll come to you at the last meeting in June, and that's all, and we'll come in this fiscal year's budget.
Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the statement of revenue and expenditures.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Shackleford, seconded by Commissioner Tower, to receive and place on file the two reports from the finance director. Is there any further discuss, discussion?
Were you including with that the monthly tax report also?
No. Um, and the monthly tax report. I agree to the two reports, but... All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, item D, approval of the monthly check register report. And it's pretty much self-explanatory, there it is. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ray? Any other motion?
I make a motion to receive the monthly check register report.
Motion by Commissioner Shackleford, seconded by Commissioner Tower, to approve the monthly check register report. Any further discussion? Will call both.
Shackleford?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Kair?
Yes.
Same on.
Yes. Moving on to item F, approval of the agenda. We have two changes to the agenda. Two items are going to be removed. Items L and O will be removed. And so do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Commissioner Shackleford, seconded by Commissioner Tower, to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, citizens wishing to address the commission on item on the agenda. And I'd like to remind you, there is a three-minute limit. Would anybody care to comment on item on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman? My name is Jim McKenzie, I'm the president of Bond Road, on twelve Bond Road. I'm here to address item I, the consideration of the action of the planning commission under Valdeck rezoning request. Since my name was put in paper last time this came up, I figured I'd fill it and give my personal opinion. I'm not representing anyone here other than myself and my wife. I don't represent any groups. First of all, there's a nice community out there, we're very residential. There's children, there's single-family homes, we have a nice neighborhood. The concern that we all have, I share, and we all share, I guess, is the fact that there's a lot of confusion about what this is intended to be. Originally, it was sought as a rezone, so that there could be horses and farm animals on this. In fact, the rezoning request is for a rural residential. There was some discussion at the last meeting, however, that this is not the intent. The intent is to have logging trucks and store on the property and to use it more or less as an industrial site. There's discussion about how there's no access to private. The discussion at the last meeting was it was going to be from Iron King Road. And Iron King Road is closed. The access is going to be through Bond Road, where we all live and where the children play. We believe that if you're going to have zoning at all, if you're going to have districts where people live in residential districts, that something like this, which is considering advanced rezoning of the entire area that's in there, is unnecessary and uncalled for. The fact that the planning commission considered this voted six to nothing to deny it, based on large amount of requests and the objections from the people that live out there. We would ask you to do the same, support your planning commission and support the residents who have all objected to this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would care to address the commission? Mr. Costag?
I guess I won't name myself. Of all the residents in that area, I'm the one that has lived there the longest, I've been in sixty-six years. I have seen a lot of sinkholes. In fact, there's one thirty feet to the north of me on my property. There's one to the southwest corner of Sinkhole. I'm thinking that if this log is allowed in that area, is that logging trucks going to increase the danger of those sinkholes? And I talked to different people, and they said that there's always that possible. Second, like Mr. McKenzie, we're a nice, quiet neighborhood. We don't need an industrial complex in that area. And third, I don't think anybody would brought this to attention, and I'm asking the commission about this because I'm not well informed on this issue, but there is a historic site right up top of the permanent hill. Is there any federal or state statutes that prohibit the structure, any commercial industry, with so many yards or feet of that historic site? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costag. Is there anyone else who would care to address the commission? All right, then moving on to item H, I have a case of local. Do you have any emergency manager, director on the flood update?
Good evening. As you know, end of April, the beginning of May, we had another flood situation throughout. The Montreal River once again came up. We had floods down the Silver Street and also the other bridge leading into Hurley. I can say this, you guys seem to be very proud of the city staff and the workers. Worker Scott, Jason, they did outstanding jobs. We kept in form, we had good communication, we came up with a plan, and we were able to execute that plan, not just for the city of Arlington, but other communities in the county. Last week, FEMA was up. They looked at the damage assessment, which we looked at for the city of Arlington, we met with the state, Scott, and some other people. FEMA was satisfied with the numbers that we had. Cogipic County had a threshold of fifty-seven thousand dollars. The public assessment, the number that gave me name was just under two point six million dollars. That's public damage assessment. Now, the state had to have thirteen point five million dollars in damage. This was flooding throughout the state, and they added all that. Now, the numbers that I ever see was the state would look at in eighteen million for those. Now, what happened was this, it goes to government office, which I believe it did the end of last week, and beginning of this week, the governor supposed to sign off on it, and then go to DC. If it goes to DC and the president declares a declaration of emergency, opens up the flood for FEMA. We, I want to do this within two thousand and two. There's a lot of work. We have a kickoff meeting with the state and FEMA. After that kickoff meeting is done, then the paperwork starts, and there's a lot of paperwork. The, we have sixty days, and the FEMA representatives said they went before sixty to get all the paperwork in for the projects that need to be done. This is the protective measures that the city took, the, and the county took, those are reimbursable. After that kickoff, any hours, the way I understand it now, any hours that the city puts in to this process is reimbursable by the government. It's usually seventy-five, twenty-five cent match. We don't know until after the declaration has been granted what that, what the state will do. The way it works is that we submit the project, the state comes in to check out the project. Once the project is completed, you submit those invoices to the state, then the state pays you. It's a long process. In two thousand and two, I think we finished up the last project in two thousand and nine. And it is a long process. I will be at emergency management coordinating for the company. I will assist the city officials any way I can in getting the, make sure the paperwork gets done, and out. As I said before, you can be very proud of the workers, the public safety department, the volunteer fire department, the city workers, Jason, Scott, we were in constant contact with each other by cell phone, on the radio, and it worked out real well. So, I'm open for any questions if you can add.
Questions?
Were there some private homes that were damaged that were?
Yes, some of the homes on Poplar Street. Poplar Street that had to be evacuated, the water went into the basement. I think we evacuated two residents from the city of Arlington. And it wasn't anything like the flood of two thousand and two, where we had homes affected all over the place. We took a proactive with the residents on Hemlock. The city went out there to sit sand making the residents when the water of the Montreal River came up. I also want to say that we worked well with the city of Hurley. We have very good meetings with them. A few days ago, we were having meeting in the morning and meeting in the afternoon to make arrangements for the next day.
Are we ready to haul the sand eggs away yet, or are we gonna?
I think, I think they're ready to go, we're in a lot of them, we're going to, the city's going to store, but hopefully not with a national movie prepared to have. And, you know, during, you know, I compared this a lot to the two thousand and two flood, and I thought it was going to be that epic, especially with that major snowstorm we had come through when the first may have. I was not happy with the weather department, even though they can't control the weather, but when they called me and said, "Cogipic County is going to get hit," and the hits hurt, so... But we prevailed, and let's say we were able to finish and ask you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Looper. And I'd like to echo what Jim said. I think the proactive approach is a real tribute to the city staff and great sliding decks, great job. Moving on to item O, business, item I, discuss and consider action on the planning commission case two zero one three dash zero zero one, Valdeck rezoning request. Thank you for last meeting, you heard this case. Unfortunately, per state statute, actual motion and action has been taken on this item. So, I provide a short memo regarding that. If you like, I can go through the request, but I think everyone's pretty aware of what the request is. So, your motion to approve or deny the request is required per state statute. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I think we discussed it in the last round, and unfortunately, it has to come back up, and residents come back again, so apologize. We have things for you to do.
I, I will make a motion to deny the rezoning request.
What's the next one?
We have a motion by Commissioner Tower, seconded by Commissioner Shackleford, to deny the rezoning request. Any further discussion?
We talked about that link at the last meeting, and I believe it was our intention to deny the request.
Unfortunately, I wasn't here, but I, I thought that's the sense that I got. And we are going to be, hopefully, updating our comprehensive plan within this year. And this is the time where we can revisit this concept of how this might be best used for the city currently applying the planning commission. It does not comply with the comprehensive plan, and I'd say it's way beyond this, this commission at this point, to do spot rezoning. That's how I feel about it. Any other thoughts? Motion by Commissioner Tower, take a vote on that. Will call?
Tower?
Yes.
Kair?
Yes.
Shackleford?
Yes.
Same on.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item J, the business, discuss and consider awarding bids to Western U.P. Recycling with the Department of Works surplus vehicles.
On this item, we did have three surplus city vehicles for our Department of Works. We did receive a credit bid for that, all the minimum bids. Western U.P. Recycling is the company that we're recommending award. We did have a bid for Remy's Auto Sales, I mean, it was within a dollar or so of the other bid, but they did come in late. So, we are not recommending Remy's, even though they were a few cents higher on the bid. It was a late bid, and it did not comply with the big requirements. So, the recommendation is to award the three vehicles to Western U.P. Recycling.
Scott? Commissioners?
I make a motion to award a bid to Western U.P. Recycling.
Motion by Commissioner Shackleford, seconded by Commissioner Tower, to award the bids for the wood surplus vehicles to Western U.P. Recycling. Any further discussion? Will call both?
Kair?
Yes.
Shackleford?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Same on.
Yes. Item K, discuss and consider awarding bids for the entree and companion kitchen equipment.
Thank you. We have the bid tabulation sheets attached. There were seventy items that were available for bid, forty-eight were bid on them. So, before you see the forty-eight high bidders for those items, we are recommending to award the bids to these individuals. And then after tonight, if you award them, they will be ready for payments and payback. Thank you. You have any questions?
Commissioners, Mr. Shackleford?
I make a motion to award the bids for the entree and the companion kitchen equipment, as described on the tabulation sheet.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Shackleford, seconded by Commissioner Kair, to award the bids for the entree and companion kitchen equipment as described on the tabulation sheet we received. Is there any further discussion? Will call both?
Shackleford? Yes. Tower?
Yes.
Kair?
Yes.
Same on.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item M, discuss and consider approving resolution zero one three dash zero one four, authorizing the two thousand one four, authorizing the two thousand and thirteen capital improvement bonds, limited tax general obligation for certain capital improvements to the city's Patrick Donald Civic Center. Is there any further discussion?
Again, this is for the, um, moving forward with, uh, arming the funds for the basement equipment. And, uh, there was a forty-five day notice period that was posted in the paper. We had not received any comment on that. This is the next step. It's kind of asking kind of a resolution to keep moving forward with that. Uh, if this is approved, then we go over and, uh, actually specific bids for the bonds. We are concordant with the square information, working on the project specifications with the board members of the civic center. Vote for bids and they have a timeline for that, so they're kind of working concordant with it. This will be the next step in moving forward with those bonds.
I made the motion to approve resolution number one three dash zero one four as described in M.
Second? We have a motion by Commissioner Shackelford and the second by Commissioner Tower to approve resolution zero one three dash zero one four, authorizing two thousand and thirteen capital improvement bonds, limited tax general obligation for certain capital improvements to the city's Patrick Donald Civic Center. Is there any further discussion? Will call both?
Tower?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Shackelford?
Yes.
Same one?
Yes. Motion carries. Item N, discuss and consider approving an amendment in the agreement entered into between the Michigan Department of Natural Resources and the city of Ironwood and authorize, did we change that to myself or is this? And authorize Mayor Protem Seemo to execute the agreement. Is there any discussion?
I'll make that motion.
What's the next one?
Motion by Commissioner Tower, supported, seconded by Commissioner Shackelford, to approve the amendment to the agreement entered into between Michigan DNR and the city of Ironwood and authorize Mayor Protem Seemo to execute the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Will call? Will call both?
Care?
Yes.
Shackelford?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Same one?
Yes. Motion carries. Item P, managers report.
Just a few items to highlight to bring up to date. There's a lot going on, things have picked up quite a bit in the community. Um, for the weekend, of course, we had Memorial Weekend. Um, staff was quite busy getting, uh, roads swept, puddles patched, even was a lawnmower patched. They were taking care of the worst of them, uh, making the downtown, uh, street furniture in place. We still have to add a little bit to some of the benches, going out with trash cans, that type of thing. Um, they did work on getting the cemetery ready. I mean, that was one of the things, that was a challenge, um, for the, uh, city, for the staff, with the time here, with the floods, with the wet conditions out there. Um, they did do things, uh, to the best they could. I know it wasn't our banner here as far as putting the best space out of the cemetery, but the limitations of last year's, uh, perfect winter we had, this year's late spring, it made it quite a challenge. We did discuss that with our cemetery personnel, um, just to go over that, looking to do it next year, three times with things. Um, but I think, uh, overall, uh, with the limitations they had, they did, uh, the best they could with what they had as far as weapons. Again, they're working on that, they're working on, uh, getting their water system energized, um, for water refuelers. Um, again, that was not, uh, energized for the weekend, just because, uh, a day or two before that, they had a lot of flooding out there, um, roads underwater, that type of thing. They didn't want to turn it on, um, because they do have a leak, it's an old system, they have hard time buying that, it costs a lot of dollars. So, there were some reasons for limitations on, to work it out. But I just want to let you know, I know the cemetery is near to here, to everybody's heart, and, um, it is to ours also. So, again, uh, you kind of critique that, but we'll do differently better for the next time. So, just make you aware of that. Um, People Park, as you see, is on your way. Angelopino is working on, very diligently, uh, making the, uh, building up, um, the pads are cutting, getting ready for paving. So, that's been doing along, uh, very well. There is an effort, um, to, uh, solve the area. There's been, uh, some action to, uh, so Stevenson will get some of that area started to help it reestablish quicker. Um, so, uh, there's some, uh, the activities out there, uh, less, uh, problem with the dirt and mud and that type of thing. So, again, uh, it's going on very nicely. Um, Northwoods paving is in town. Um, they have the bulk of the street paving project for the city. Um, the city commission had bonded for over a million dollars last year. We did the bulk of the work last year. Um, there is about two hundred thousand left. And if we didn't include a copy of the map in front of you, the areas in yellow are the streets that I identified and painted on this bottom. Again, there's more streets in here than areas of money, and that was done intentionally, um, just so we had a place to go, so we didn't end up with money left over and the streets not paved. That was a recommendation of the bottom council. So, we worked from the east, uh, excuse me, west going to the east. We, uh, accomplished everything, basically, you know, call it the core area of the city. As we go forward to the west or the right side of the pavement, we're now, uh, looking at bonding Newport Heights Road, and then we'll probably finish up the dollars that we have. Again, it doesn't even have a lot of other needs there. We have this neighborhood, other neighborhoods, and already, um, Jessville's pretty good. We have a street or two we have to pick up there. So, we'll be talking to the city commission, um, what are we doing for the next phase? Again, these dollars will be spent, uh, you'll see that could be up on, uh, on any Newport Heights, and that will pretty much finish up the dollars that we have available. I'm going to the street market.
Could I ask you one thing, Scott, about that project? Could you provide us with a map that reflects what streets actually have been done?
Within, for the street market?
Yeah.
Again, and actually, um...
Because the yellow shows the streets that we originally identified?
Right.
Not that, what, what actually will end up being done?
I can do that, and now, I'll, I'll update this, just for a quick reference. Everything's been done except for that area of Newport Heights. I'll also do a map, uh, for better reference.
Thank you.
And we do have, uh, way your construction back in town too, with the contractor, we have a water sewer project in Jerseyville, I'll give that to you back for a little over a week. Um, and raising animals, they're ready to pave, and actually, Northwoods paving is in town. They are putting some of the second batch of asphalt up there in Jerseyville right now, on some of the streets that are, uh, ready for that. Um, they kind of, they have some soft spots, they go in and improve some of those soft spots, uh, where the asphalt's cracked or elevated, they'll correct that and then continue with their paving. So, again, I'm sure the intent is that everything paved out, um, during the final landscape to, you know, they have quite a lengthy punch list of things that they're working on. Um, but they are back in town and, uh, making their work, uh, work completed. We also had a meeting with, um, Ross Pearson, he's our contractor, working on the West Air project. I think that was the water sewer project and, uh, plus the, um, putting the fire series down there. Uh, all the water sewer works done, first of all, the asphalt is on, um, they're in there, uh, they're basing corrections, uh, anywhere that's been any subbing, political is fixed up, um, get the ice skating done, and then, uh, work on the final lift, you know, asphalt over there too. Angelopino is a contractor, paving that project. So, we've been with them, um, their schedule, they'll see some acuity from Ross Pearson construction later this week, probably Thursday or Friday, going in and starting to raise the manholes, getting prepped, uh, take care of some of the, uh, soft spots out there, and then get it pre-paved. We are coordinating with the EPA, they're down there, you know, they did a cleanup on the gas mine site. They're going to be back in town this Thursday, just basically look over the site with the idea that you intend to mobilize back there with their contractor, um, to define the landscape out there, they have some recent, um, some topside, what towns and see. So, we're currently, uh, with Ross Pearson on that, so we get that in and out before we get the loads out there. So, that's all taking place or, or starting up. Um, this Wednesday and, uh, maybe Commissioner Shackelford has touched base on this, the safe house to school, um, program is, is being developed, is work in progress, or is walking on it?
Yes, so on, uh, tomorrow, parents and residents are welcome to, um, help with the walking on it for the safe house to school program. It'll go, starting, it starts at two, but we'll be, you know, have a discussion beforehand and, um, visiting both Slate School and, I agree with going to LL, right, and, and the area that students walk.
So, it'll be at two o'clock at the home room, you know, and kind of dispersing from there, so if there's someone from the community that wants to participate, they're invited to attend. Um, Curry Park, uh, Tam Road, um, that, uh, is open for camping, is not fully functional at this point. Between the best standpoint, um, we have a camper host that helps us out, and, uh, camper host, uh, heading the week, over a week and a half, maybe from now, they'll be out there and it's, uh, open. It's, uh, right now, uh, kind of on system, basically, to be monitored, because some come to periodically, but just to make people...
Yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah, come, come, come. Set there at four, three, not yet. Okay. So, that's open, uh, fully open here by day. Um, the county post site this Sunday, or who asked about that? We did put notes in the paper, I have it on our website. Um, county post site hours are open from Monday through Friday, um, eight to seven, eight AM, seven PM, and weekends, Saturdays and Sundays from eight to three PM. And that's it, my report.
Thank you, Scott. Item O, or a few rather, other matters? Some of your chat commissioners to...
Well, I guess I will mention, um, the friends of the miners in Warren Parish Park will have a cleanup in the park, um, on Saturday, which starts at nine AM and till about noon, and they'll be, uh, probably after that, it's lots of fun.
Well, the tires, will you call?
Yeah. I had one complaint, uh, from citizens, uh, speeding on Garley Street. Apparently, there's a problem with the trucks driving, hired to speed through there. She asked for some kind of traffic enforcement or, uh, speeding sign or something, something that affect. We'll take a look at that.
Take a look at that tomorrow, maybe we can also put a street trailer on there all same time. You have the Marissa on trucks?
Uh, she didn't, she didn't tell me, uh, she's in a little problem with, uh, some trucks driving, hired to speed through that street.
I have a few things I want to mention also. Um, as everyone else has heard, you know, I heard some complaints about the cemetery. And the person, one of the people I talked to suggested that we could remove the leaves in the fall if at all possible. This person understood that, it's too wet to move. They got that, but there's really a lot of leaves around, and if we are proactive, if possible, in the fall, to get those leaves out of there, that could really... And this was an unusual year, total storm, still. To take care of that at a time would be, could be something important to me.
That's one of the things we talked about before, and if you have a chance to do some...
Thanks. Um, I have a question about a lot of the streets that we've seen shifting around. When they're repaired, is there a warranty period that the contractor's going to say that this will be good for a certain number of years?
For the safe projects that are ongoing right now?
Yeah, both, both the, uh, city bond issue and the Wagner.
Right. I believe there's a one-year warranty, might help, for that, including a one-year warranty on these?
That's correct.
So, then through one freestyle, and go through another freestyle period to see if there are other weak spots. Um, the beauty of all the rigging we had is, you know, you're seeing weak spots that were out there, or should have, hopefully have, people have taken care of the majority of problems the next year, if there is something that does pop up, different where you're worried.
And are you satisfied with Wagner's efforts towards working with the owners on the restoration issues that I'm sure some have come up? How's that going?
It is, um, that's one of the, um, challenges out there yet, uh, the restoration work. Um, there's still a lot of work to be done. Um, we are putting a punch list together, um, for them. Again, proof will be in the pudding. Um, we have to get out and correct some of these areas and make sure the grass is rolling and, uh, yards are reestablished, and, um, there are some areas that are challenged right now, but, uh, we'll be in a punch list, and our expectation is that Wagner will get corrected, whatever needs corrected.
And we still only have a nice chunk of money, and we have some leverage to make sure that...
The city has, we have a sizable retention job, like, remember the dollar amount up there, like, it's...
I, because I'm not sure of, I'd rather not say.
Sure, but it's, it's like a two-dollar box that's being held. Just pretty tight, to make sure things are being corrected and we're comfortable about the project before we begin coming.
And, um, you mentioned Assad effort over at the, uh, People Park. I did happen to come to the, uh, and they got suffered extremely good price, and basically are going to be organizing a work field when the time comes, and, um, anybody who wants to help the city out, can help with Assad, we don't have a day yet, but that's, that is coming up. It's a way to really defray some of the expense we might normally have with that project.
Right.
So, that's going along real well. The other thing I noticed during the past, more than weekend, weekend is particularly tough, but there are a lot of loud ATVs. I'm not talking the normal ones, I don't want you to worry about it, but in my neighborhood, there's some really loud ATVs, and I would like to see these people real live a little bit. People are really buzzing around, getting their volume ready for this, so I'd like to see somebody who will help, somebody in that direction. That's all. Item R, citizens wishing to address the commission on items not on the agenda, and they have a high degree of... Mr. Costack?
I noticed tonight, and I was very difficult to the rezoning person, I don't think I could address it. Somebody has been blowing up Iron King, I think, with ATVs, and the barricades there are all wrecked and knocked down. Maybe something could be done, like you have at the top of Iron King, those stone monuments all coming, or stone rocks. Maybe we could put those down at the bottom of Iron King to prevent that also. Like, those, uh, placed barricades, whatever they are, the wooden structure, they're all a little bit down there.
Thank you, everyone. You've given great suggestion. Anyone else? Mr. Gubba?
Yes, thank you. Now, it's most of Rob's sits here. This is the first time I put up the flags at the cemetery for the veterans, and that cemetery was, was a mess. Like you said, the leaves should be picked up in the fall, whether or not you have to plead these guys overtime or not, that's a very sacred place out there. That was a mess. The streets in there are a mess. The water system is a mess. How can this, well, is there anything that, that they, they just can do to, to straighten this place up?
Well, something I was thinking down the line is that maybe potentially use some of our perpetual care fund money that we authorized some use for, past commission heads, and, uh, doing some work in the cemetery.
Okay, and...
Something I was considering, something I was...
Excuse me, can you just borrow or, or take the money out of the perpetual care fund at all?
No.
For another project? Okay. And why wasn't there anybody there this weekend? The busiest weekend of the whole year. That Saturday was a beautiful day. There shouldn't have been somebody down there. There were people looking for graves, they didn't know where they were. There, there, there were some veterans' graves that were missed with the flags, and nobody's down there. Why wasn't anybody down there? I know you have, Wakefield had four people at their cemetery. Why wasn't anybody down at Wakefield? I mean, excuse me, at the cemetery, my everyone, to help these people out that come in from out of town.
What we do on, uh, Memorial Weekend, we do have, uh, one staff person on Monday for the parade, if you're out, not with four hours in overtime. Um, we don't, again, it's all budget driven. Um, again, with the state process, we're all in through the budget process, negotiations, uh, what happened, so, but it's something that, uh, we don't, we have someone, you know, down there, um, basically just, you know, for the aspect of showing people around. Um, we do have limitations on the budget, and, uh, we try a few marketless funds for, you know, maintenance, repair, you know, all those key priority, uh, building block, uh, parts of the cemetery over the city. And it would be nice to have someone down there, I think anybody would argue that, we do have to, uh, technically develop certain areas, and that's one that, uh, for two years, it's not only, you know, again, I think that we were done last year, or maybe the year or two.
Scott, that's one thing you should not take in account on this, that cemetery. This is the busiest weekend of the whole year, this past, this past week, it was the busiest day, and, and people were mad, especially the way it looked, but they were mad. I know with the springtime, the way, it was a mess with the water, it's still, that's another nature, but there, there's, there's graves that have been sunk in for years in there. That should, that should be leveled off.
And maybe to touch on that, uh, I agree that you settled during the winter, uh, if not just this winter, or any time, I think, as you go out, and, uh, fellows getting top rest, and it was so wet, they did get a few in the back corner where they could reach, but a lot of them making...
Yeah, you can't, that's, 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 that's a mess. And one other thing that was, the, the stone dump up by the Indian, that was shut off. Did they take the stone out of the city, where, out of the downtown area, bring it up there and dump it? That's the shortest route, so they had to go over by, by, off Air Street, yeah. Why was that shut off?
We like to add to that, um, we do have, um, I think, four stone dumps in town. That one was discussed last fall, uh, basically had the trial at one area that we were dumping stone up there, in addition to the other stone dumps that we have.[1780.54] snow up there, in addition to the other snow dumps that we have, we tried to disperse that snow into other areas, with the idea that that dump, you know, snow in there was causing a lot of debris over that area. They are trying to clean up the, my effort through the volunteer efforts to, basically I want to clean up all the debris out of that area down there. So we did a one-year trial, wanted to see what the impacts were. Again, it was a good year to try it, it's been a lot of snow, and most of it, evaluating, it wasn't effective, wasn't it, but that was the reason for it, to try to keep that area a little more pristine and cleaner than it has--
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna smoke that much farther. I mean, I mean, it's only half a mile till today dump, but half a mile, what do you want to trip Saturday, man? Could all that snow?
Mm-hmm. And we did, like I said, take a look at it from a standpoint of evaluating, see if it took us, how much extra effort it did take to run all the snow up there, and it's something to take a look at for the summer. That was the reason for it, to try to, you know, keep that area clean. They're trying to put a lot of effort into there to make it a hook nice, so you have the Iowa out there, you know, the park coming through there, so that was the reason for it.
Like I said, the cemetery wasn't a mess, you have to, you have to get some people in there. Whether or not you have to clean it overtime or work the weekends, that place has to be straightened up, because it's a mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gubas. And I'd like to say that this is, this is a big deal, the cemetery on condition of Memorial Weekend, and we need to be as relaxed as we can be in handling this.
I just add to that, again, it hasn't been forgotten, the security, all the reasons for the Memorial Weekend, the cemetery, we did have over, over the last week and a half, 129 hours up there. So, I mean, there's a lot of effort that way, even though, you know, it wasn't perfect, because they couldn't tie it up, it was wet, they couldn't get things out, started like this, like, there was a lot of manpower to go down there to get it, to the point it was active, and so it was a blast of trying and a lot of effort. And I think it's all common sense, and all our, you know, minds from, you know, administration, which would be sexy, that, you know, everybody wants to make that place look, it's a good weekend. Again, the limitations this season, we've been getting toward mine, it's been--
Have you had any kind of directory that people can reference when they go to the cemetery and find specific sites, if there are any?
I think, I think they call here the building, so even if there was somebody--
But we've talked about putting a kiosk up down there, good maps, showing location, that type of thing. That is one of the big questions, you know, where is somebody, or where's, you know, where's site, is it a building, or is it way off, and they had information? So it's something we could, we talked about in the past, haven't done at this point, but if that's a good way, at least get some more information down there that people are looking for, so they can look at it, might not, where, you know, some of the, some of the ways that--
Seems like it should be really worthwhile, simplified, it's for a lot of cheap--
Right.
I think we should have a meeting of some kind, and discuss what projects we'd like to see fixed at Delta Cemetery this summer.
Sure.
Maybe identify some funding samples, we can go over there, just meet the staff and concerned residents, and whatever else, just talk about what you can do to spruce things up, don't we?
That'd be a good workshop topic, then, if you have a workshop, we can take you back down here and talk about that. Do a few workshop items, that'd be a good one, future funding for Volco Streets, be the next, you know, step or two. Maybe two or three items, that'd be, that'd be a good, you can basically handle a couple of those topics there.
Any other citizens wishing to address the commission? Mr. Frank?
Beginning with me, you mentioned we have so many laws, it's important, all of them. I wish that applied to the World Mill property over there. It was a staging area for two years on the construction project. There was no site plan, no requirements to restore the area, absolutely not. Anyway, correct me if I wrong here, but if there's public safety, it's fairly short staff, in fact, there was only one officer on duty during the day of Memorial Day, and now they are responsible for light enforcement? Is your number two goal this year is light enforcement? Should getting rid of the light officer be your first action to accomplish this? Or are we not admitting that the light officer has been completely ineffective all these years? Since he was promoted to DPW supervisor, we would expect it, maybe they would try to make things look nice when we're doing jobs. The north side of Bourbon Road, where the old snow dump was, concrete was dumped over the edge last year as part of the construction project. Pieces of sewer, concrete sewer, and piled arisins last summer. I agree, we're supposed to be done with the sewer project, why haven't they removed in the fall? You said they were trying to keep that area pristine, I guess we have a different definition of that, because that's where the street sweeper empties everything, it's on top of that hill. Generally, when I sweep my kitchen, I don't go and dump it in my living room, it's still littering everything else off the road. Then we go to the south side of Bourbon Road, and that's our new snow dump. So we closed the snow dump on the side where we always used it because of erosion, and we started dumping on the other side. And if you go in there and look, there's garbage down there, and everything, of course, we stayed with the snow, it's totally not trees down, there's so much dirt in with that snow that it's gonna smother any vegetation. And then, when we had to clean up the culverts, I believe down on Mill Street, we hauled all that stuff all the way over the hill, and we dumped that right there, including pieces of asphalt from the collapsing road. Two of you are very active with the Friends of the Art. The north side is where you cleaned up last year. The south side, last year, you trimmed those trees back so that you could see Iowa up, and I believe that's the area that you're working on this year to clean up. I mean, entire of my neighborhood being used as dump, that alone should stop this, but we also have a tourist attraction up there. And I don't know why we insist on dumping crap absolutely everywhere in the city. You talked about streets that still have to be paved, is Hazel Street included in that?
I think Bonnie and Newport--
Okay, there is--
Under this section--
So Hazel, it is not. All of the roads up in the Nori neighborhood were paved, either as part of the sewer project or as part of the overlay, except for the equivalent of one block of Hazel Street. That area was used as a staging area for the project all last year, which means heavy equipment was on it the entire summer. They piled dirt, sand, gravel, everything that, had to come in with bulkages, scoop it up, and that road is absolutely horrible. The, it was bad to begin with, the construction work completely destroyed that road. But last year, the supple turnoff there that connects Bourbon Road to Alfred Wright that has one garage on it, that was repaved. So I expect that Hazel Street will be paved as part of this project. It was destroyed because of the construction work. It is your responsibility to fix that. I saw in minutes from the last meeting, the completion date is June 14th, for all of the work Wagner has to do. Have you seen Camerac, how pine? You driven up there to see what's happening to those roads? Pine Street, I've skied it on some of their mobile fields. There is a foot deep crack going down Bourbon Road, and the ruler in there was completely covered. This is not putting another layer of pavement over it. That road needs to be dug up. And we talked about a one-year warranty, we don't need to wait another year. That road needs to be dug up, the entire road that needs to be replaced. Bourbon Road, Wagner dug up one small section of it to run sewer lines, the rest of it was then paved as part of the overlay project. In that section, where they dug up for the sewer, there is already a dip forming in that road. Why does it seem that everywhere that Wagner has dug, those roads are sinking? The roads up in Nori were bad, yes, they had potholes in them, but they were level. And now, I mean, the only kid, the numbers have been enjoying up there as a kid on bicycle. It is absolutely horrible, it looks like you melted the road, it is so rippled. I've heard reports of collapsing sewers. One of my neighbors was told the reason that the sewers collapsed in the alley is the garbage structure was done. You mentioned that, I guess we couldn't have planned for that. So there's been collapsed sewers, I've heard of leaks. Do we have any numbers on just how many of these? I understand that occasionally something happens, this project rained too often, there are the problems. So who pays? I think it's all this. The boulevard by my house was ceded twice. It was leveled, then they came in and let them go put the sidewalks in. It's all roading out from under from the sidewalks. They came in again and ceded it, it's still dug up, it's not level, it's poor quality dirt. If I go dig a hole in my yard, it's gonna be, you can see the difference between what was put on all of our boulevards around here. So we have to keep coming back and doing this work. Who's paying for this? Can we just keep writing in the chat, or are they required to do something? People's yards is some six, eight inches from this project. There is no, it's 17 days till the 14th. We gonna hold it to this? I mean, my alley, nothing was done in there. It was done in, I believe, early July last year, I'll work with them. No restoration done, that's all. So if you ask, there's been complaints, you bet. Fortunately, a lot of people will come here and see, oh, there are a lot of problems. A friend of mine, he was down on Camerac, he asked, do you guys know Wagner's old robots? We got nothing, we're gonna fix this. Again, it seems like no, no plan to do that, so. And if these things need to be answered, I would recommend having a public meeting just to discuss the results of this construction project, to hear what people have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank, and I have a lot of concerns as well about this project, and we shall see how they perform for the next three weeks, and my treat is terrible. There are some others that might unfold, there are plenty, so we do have the leverage, and we have to use it.
We expect them to make the proper corrections, get here.
Are there any persistent citizens wishing to address the commission? Here you go, I have a motion for adjournment. I'll make that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Your turn.